Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 16, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griswold.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Griswold.
I'll move to approve the very detailed minutes of the June 2, 2020 meeting.
Let's adopt this evening's agenda first.
Excuse me.
Was that a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Griswold, second by Demmer, to adopt the agenda. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Councilmember Griswold.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Griswold, second by Johnson. Any discussion or corrections? Councilmember Geisler?
There's one correction that should be made on page nine, the third paragraph. It says gate three, and it should be gate one.
We'll make that correction. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items on the consent agenda this evening. And the first one is item two, to adopt resolution 20-56, approving the 2021 Civic Center fees. The city rents facilities to users for various events during the year, including weddings, banquets, parties, athletic group functions, et cetera. And with the latest review of fees, it was found that the Civic Center has been losing ground on the market and operations. The facility has been well maintained, is in demand, and fees should meet this standard. The proposed rates are based upon market research of neighboring private and public comparable facilities and current operating expenses. So we're looking to adopt resolution number 20-56, approving the 2021 fees and charges for use of the Civic Center facilities. Item three, which is the second item on our consent agenda, is to adopt resolution 20-53, setting a public hearing date for miscellaneous 2020, parentheses one, assessment levy. So the city council must set a public hearing as required by state statutes at that hearing scheduled for July 7. The city council may refer appellants to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, which is what we will do, because that's the meeting on the June 7, is the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, I would imagine. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals will then give their recommendation for the city council's consideration, and the Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on August 6 and make a recommendation to the city council at the August 18 council meeting. How can we have all these dates in here? What happens July 7 then? Is that our council meeting? Has that moved back? Okay. All right. These assessments include services provided to taxpayers. In most cases, code enforcement violations. And the terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed. So we're looking to adopt resolution 20-53, miscellaneous assessments, declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment role, and ordering the public hearing for July 7, 2020 on the proposed assessment role. So item four, which is the third item here on our consent agenda, adopt resolution 20-54, revising the improvement fees for Creek Meadows Two Townhome Improvement Area. And this is a reduction of actual fees from $1,031,735 down to $976,713. So we're looking to adopt resolution 20-54, revising the improvement fees in the Creek Meadows Two Improvement Area. Item five is to accept the 2019 annual financial statement. So the city council held a work session on June 16 to review the 2019 annual financial statement with the city's external auditors, Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, Radesovich, and Company P.A., MMKR, certified public accountants. And then, once approved, an electronic copy of this statement will be made available on the city's website. So we're looking to accept the 2019 annual financial statement. Item number six is an informational item. There's been a corporate officer change for Triple Shift Entertainment LLC, doing business as Classic Bowl. So that's just for information only. Next item is to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor licensing to allow for expanded outdoor service. Governor Walz's Order 20-63 allows restaurants to open with limited outdoor seating beginning June 1. In an attempt to assist businesses with reopening, staff created a temporary outdoor dining policy which provides the guidelines under which our liquor license holders can expand their premises. Staff has verified that all requirements have been met and approved temporary expansions for the following locations until October 31, 2020: Outback Steakhouse at 8880 Springbrook Drive, Leonard's Bar and Grill at 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard, and the Short Stop Bar and Grill at 421 Northdale Boulevard. So we're looking to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor license premises as outlined above through October 31, 2020. And the item eight, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to adopt the COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. Under Executive Order 20-74, Governor Walz, on June 5, critical sector businesses, including government entities like cities, are now required to adopt a COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. So we have attached here our COVID-19 Preparedness Plan, and we're looking to adopt that. And that is our full consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Wells.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer. Discussion or questions on anything?
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So first off, on the financial statement, we were just in a work session, so some of the people in the room caught the tail end of that. And it was a third-party group that does the CPA audit of the budget, and it came back with an unmodified opinion, no deficiencies, no noncompliance, just a really clean budget. And I think it's just always good for people to know that their city has a clean audited budget. And then, second, I just had an ask for city manager that we put our COVID Preparedness Plan on the website somewhere, because I know that there's probably some small businesses that would kind of like to take it and maybe start from it and make modifications. So I think it would be a nice service for people to do that.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and council, certainly if it's not out there already, and I can double-check, I was thinking that it was, we could put it out there. I will mention, the COVID Preparedness Plan, this is a template provided by the state of Minnesota. They did release updated guidelines for all sectors of business yesterday, late in the evening or afternoon. So there's some, I'll call them minor changes, we'll have to make to this document before it's considered completely sufficient compared to the guidance they provided yesterday, but they're pretty administrative changes. So if council adopts this, which I suspect you will, just keep in mind, we'll update this here this week, and then we can even provide the updated copy out on our website.
It might be somewhere on the website, but there's this big banner that says coronavirus on the website. If you click there, it's not under that.
Sure. Yeah. I'll double-check that, but yes.
So temporarily, the changes can be authorized under a management order, then?
Yeah. Well, we don't think we need an order. They're fairly administrative at this point, but, and there are things, I don't know, most of the plan follows essentially the same as their prior guidance. They updated some language about HVAC and some other things that we can certainly tailor our new plan to.
All right. Any other discussion or questions?
The lawyers.
Mr. Brody?
I'd also note in response to Councilmember Demmer that on the DED website, there are templates for all sorts of businesses. They're in Word form, so you can simply, for a small business, can sort of fill in the blank to their needs. And then there's individual ones, obviously, for specific businesses. So there is lots of guidance on DED, and I think Dolly as well.
Good. Thank you.
I would think most of them had to already have that in order to reopen.
Correct, especially the non-critical ones.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Next is, under Old Business, Consider Planning Case 20-3, Consider Adoption of Ordinance 2233, Changing Zoning From General Commercial To High Density Residential, 10200 Goldenrod Street. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. If we can get... Oh, I did have a PowerPoint on here. Necrotologically challenged. Anyways, this is the property in question. The applicant is proposing two related items that the council will consider tonight. One is a zone change to high-density residential, which the council introduced back on January 2. And the second related item is a change in the land use designation of this parcel, excuse me, from general commercial to commercial mixed use. It's about six and a half acres in size. And fronts on Goldenrod. This is Foley Avenue here, Foley Boulevard, Highway 10, ramp, post office is in front, and it's highlighted here. Current zoning, it's general commercial, and then you've got general commercial to the north and southeast with the post office zoned institutional. Back in 1993, the applicant got the zoning changed from moderate density residential to general commercial, and it has been that continuously since that time. The applicant, again, is proposing to change this to high-density residential, which would allow the property developed at a density of between 10 and 50 units per acre. Also, I'd like to point out that the commercial mixed use... The commercial mixed use, which is what this would be, allows for both commercial and residential development. It would allow for development as, under any other commercial zoning districts, and it could be developed at a high-density residential, which is between 10 and 50 units per acre. With that, I'll answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience tonight. Also, if you've got any questions of him. Staff is recommending that the council adopt ordinance 2233, which changes the zoning from general commercial to high-density residential. The corresponding land use change is resolution 20-55, which changes it from general commercial to commercial mixed use.
Anybody have any questions? Is Mr. Harlecker here?
Just a brief question.
Councilmember Johnson?
So I see when you toggle between the two maps, the sites are a little different or depicted a little differently. Are they different, or is that just the way these maps came up?
It's just the way they came out.
Okay. So it's the same site we're doing both of these on?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, that is weird. I hadn't noticed that.
Yeah, which one is correct? Is it this one here, the one that we can see that's...
I'm guessing it's the larger one.
Yeah, this is the zoning map. It's all general commercial.
Okay. Thanks.
And the land use map, a little bit different scale, shows it as general commercial with the post office as institutional.
It's the diagonal line down on the south part, where it's a straight line on the bottom one, and it's a diagonal line on that one.
Right. And that one, the diagonal suggests there's property in between, so. Yeah, it should be... Straight down. Straight down.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Griswold?
I think you might have mentioned this, but back in 1993, this was changed from moderate density residential to general commercial. So in '93, can you explain to me the difference between moderate density residential and high-density residential? You just told me a little bit about high density, but did you mention what moderate density meant in '93?
It's probably in the range between four to seven units per acre, four to eight units per acre.
Okay. Yeah, that's an interesting perspective.
Yeah.
I was absolutely determined that I was not going to like this project when it first came in. I thought, oh, changing to high density, no, no. And then I just kept looking at it, and I'm thinking, I don't know what else would really go there. I mean, it's right along Highway 10. It's really, you got the post office, you've got the insurance place, you've got commercial there. It's... Have we had any conversations with the school district, or will we wait until there's actually a proposal to build a building? Okay, because I know the school district doesn't want any surprise buildings like that. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah. Having spent a lot of time on planning and looked at cases, this is a prime example of a parcel that, you know, could go a couple of different ways. It could have gone pure commercial, it could have gone residential, and you do your best guess, right? And so looking at it as commercial, and it just hasn't moved. And looking at it as a potential from a residential, there's a park nearby, we can work on traffic flow, it's closer to getting onto Highway 10, so high density does make a lot of sense in this case. And so I'll go forward and make a motion unless somebody else has other discussion. Okay. So I move Planning Case 20-3 to approve Ordinance 2233, approving the proposed zone change to high-density residential based on our four findings. One, the proposed zoning to high-density residential is consistent with the land use designation of commercial mixed use. Two, the proposed rezoning is compatible with the adjacent land uses and zoning. Three, the times and conditions have changed so that reasonable use of the property can't be made under current zoning. And four, the proposed zone change would not have an adverse impact on the area.
I will second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion?
If I may, your honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
So this is in my ward, and I have had some feedback from some of the neighbors about it. The biggest concern that I think people have expressed is the impact on rush hour traffic, and I've talked about that in the past on this. So I would encourage city staff to think about that and how we might mitigate rush hour traffic and the traffic flows in and out, and whether there can be some inclusion of this property, especially if it's going to be high density, in public transit kind of options for this site. But I too, as I have sat there and looked at the site and considered it, especially from the perspective of, it's in my backyard. I mean, literally in my backyard. I'm just on the other side of Aspen Park. I think this is the highest and best use of this piece of property for the city of Coon Rapids, and creates the biggest benefit, if you will, that we could have for this property in Coon Rapids. So, well, I've had some feedback from individuals who would prefer that a high-density residential not be in that area, and I understand their position on it. I've also heard from others that they like a lot of the development that we've been encouraging here in Coon Rapids. And I think this could be consistent with that, and it'll be something that we can look at down the road. So I'm going to support this because I think, long-term, for the city of Coon Rapids and this area, this is the best option for the property and the community. Thank you.
I think this is the first one I've never, I haven't received an email on it. Haven't received a thing on it. I took that as a good sign.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griswold?
I think to your point, I too, I haven't had any emails on this either, but I think we might see emails once we start to see development plans and things like that. And all that, again, it will come back in front of the Planning Commission, back in front of the city council, and we can, you know, make recommendations of things, of, you know, traffic and things like that. But I think, overall, the fact that it was moderate density probably doesn't work there. You don't want townhomes on the edge of a ramp, and it hasn't been developed as general commercial. And I think that if we did build something in here, I think it will definitely be of benefit to the community in terms of supporting our local businesses, including, you know, our very robust retail sector. So I think for those reasons, I would go with this change.
Your honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
And just a reminder that our acceptance of this as the highest and best use is not us saying that we want a project where we have to put in TIF, because I think enthusiasm would drop quite significantly if that were the case.
It would drop more with a bad project.
Depends on what it looks like, really.
All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Under New Business, we're going to consider Planning Case 20-2, Consider Adoption of Resolution 20-55, Land Use Designation, General Commercial To Commercial Mixed Use, 10200 Goldenrod Street. Kind of one needs to follow the other, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I can take that as well. And just as a basic understanding, for, we've got zoning, and we've got land use, and those two things work compatibly, and we're required by state law for them to be aligned. I can't have one over here and one over here. They have to be the same. So when we change the zoning, we would also be obligated to change the land use. So with that, in Planning Case 20-2, I would make a motion to approve resolution 20-55, approving the amendment to city's comprehensive land use plan to change the land use designation from general commercial to commercial mixed use based on the following three statements. One, the proposed comprehensive land use amendment is compatible with the adjacent comprehensive land use designations and land uses. The proposed comprehensive land use amendment will not have an adverse impact on the adjacent properties. And number three, the proposed comprehensive land use amendment is supportive of the comprehensive land use plan, land use chapter, housing chapter, and economic chapter goals for the city, including providing a variety of housing, quality housing types that reflect current market conditions, and providing housing stock that supports the needs of local businesses and employees.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. And just in case we smoothed over that a little bit, high-quality housing types, high-quality. Okay. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griswold?
Just a clarification, that this change, then, does it reflect everything in the orange, or just everything to the north and east of 10 and the ramp?
Everything on the side, right?
It's just the area here that...
It's just the area outlined in that black.
It's a single lot that's being considered tonight.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, I wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Harlecker. Thanks, Mr. Teason. You're not going to hang around till the end? What the? All right. Item 11 is to consider the Golf Tech Bunker Hills Lease Amendment, short-term relief, short-term rent relief. Mr. Anderson, you want to present this, or do you want me to read the discussion, or you're just here for questions?
Questions, if you agree to the...
All right, I'll read it then. As a result of the, this is, yeah, Consider Golf Tech Bunker Hills Lease Amendment, Short-Term Rent Relief. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and Governor's Order 20.04, golf courses and related businesses closed for a significant period of time, which included Golf Tech Bunker Hills. Golf Tech is requesting the city consider rent relief in the form of allowing them to pay for utility costs only in June, and then a 50% reduction in rent and the club sales fee in July. Approval of the attached lease amendment with Golf Tech would continue the viability and vitality of the instructional operations at Bunker Hills, while acknowledging the significant impact that the COVID-19 pandemic has had on the golf instruction and club sales business. The 2013 Learning Center construction and the lease agreements with Golf Tech have created a regional destination for golf instruction and growth of golf programs. The city of Coon Rapids has benefited from additional driving range and instructional revenues, as well as instructional programming that matches the quality of the golf course and clubhouse. Ooh, well-written. I agree with all that. So we're looking to, let's see, the rent is hereby amended to add, the Golf Tech will pay the following rent, so June... Mr. Stemwell, does this reflect what we just talked about? June zero, July 750, and then golf club sales fee, nothing in June, and then 550 in July. So that reflects what we're talking about here.
Mayor and council, it does. Those are 50% for the month of July, what was stipulated in the lease agreement, which was approved by council, hence why it's coming back for amendment.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Your honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
So personally, I find that very fair and reasonable. Perhaps keeping track of these sort of things, if there is some sort of CARES Act that we can benefit from, you know, we can do this now, assuming that it won't be, but maybe there will be. So if nobody has anything else, I'll make the motion.
Even if they do, they can ask afterwards.
That's true. So move approval of the lease amendment with Golf Tech Minnesota for June and July rent relief due to the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic.
I second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griswold?
Regarding our existing agreement with Golf Tech, we just entered into that, I think, in 2018. What is the term of the original agreement, the one that we're working on? Is it a five-year term?
Yes, it's five years. The original one was five, and the new one is five.
Got it. All right. I mean, five years goes quick. I was just going to say that Golf Tech's been a good partner of ours, and I mean, we want them to be a partner of ours for that full five-year term, so I would fully support this.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 12-400 Fire Prevention Code. And this just appears to be some updating of the book.
And it's just an introduction.
Yeah. All right. Updating from the 2015 to the 2020 edition, and just changing a few little language things. Does anybody have any questions on this? Mr. Councilmember Demmer?
Not that it's going to affect anything vote-wise, because I'm sure we're going to align to the code, but if Chief Piper or somebody else could just send out a quick, like, executive summary on what is different?
It's just the things that we've covered in the ordinance, right?
Yeah, literally the, you're in the names.
No, I mean, but what's different about the Minnesota 2020 edition that we're changing to?
Oh, I see.
Uniform.
Oh, yikes, that's really getting into the weeds.
Nope, just the high-level... Nope, just the high level. So what?
Okay. All right. Any other questions or, all right. So then with that, we will consider ordinance amending Chapter 12-400 Fire Prevention Code. We will consider that introduced. Item 13 is to consider a development agreement with Centra North LLC Port Riverwalk Second Edition. And we are moving along to the, the townhomes along the boulevard there. The city's housing, and do we have a presentation, or should I just read the description?
Mr. Mayor, I can just provide a real quick summary if you'd like, or if you wanna read it, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Frenelius, I'd love to hear you read. You know, if you wanna just talk, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So just briefly, the agreement that you have before you is for the second edition of the Port Riverwalk development with Centra Homes. This covers 29 lots. The first phase covered 42 lots. So between the first phase and the second phase, about half of the development is now covered under, under two separate development agreements. Basically, this document just spells out the responsibilities between the, the city and the developer. The public improvements, which is what the city is responsible for, so things like streets, sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer, those are, those are covered by the, the city. Those need to be completed by, much of that work needs to be completed by the end of this year. Some of that can roll over into June of next year, primarily the streets. And then the developer is responsible for the balance of it, which is all the private utilities, sidewalks, landscaping, those kinds of things. They will have until June 30th, June 30th of next year to complete those improvements. And the developer is providing a letter of credit as security for their work if they weren't able to complete them. The city could draw on that letter of credit to complete those, those improvements. We do anticipate one or more additional development agreements for subsequent phases for the balance of the site, whether it's one or two, we don't know at this point. It will depend on when Centra wants to plat the, the balance of the site. One thing I will point out, I caught a typo in the development agreement on page 10. There's a reference to park dedication fees. So the developer is responsible for park dedication fees, $2,000 per lot. But what we've included here, I think, was a holdover from the previous agreement, which references 42 lots and $2,000 per lot. So we should change that as part of your final recommendation. We can, you know, clean up the document itself, but as part of the condition of approval, we should make sure to correct the amount, which would be $58,000 for the 29 lots that would be covered by this agreement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So not, not $84,000, but $58,000, is what you said?
For 29 lots.
Okay. All right. Any questions of Mr. Frenelius?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to approve the development agreement for the Port Riverwalk Second Edition with Centra North LLC correcting the amount for park dedication to 58K for 29 lots.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Everybody's just quietly celebrating.
I'm happy.
Hearing no more discuss, hearing no more discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to open mic, public comment. Is anybody here to address council this evening for open mic? Then come up and state your name and address, and you have three minutes. And of course, do I need to read this? Because we don't allow any backbiting, or there's this whole list of things. We'll be okay, right?
Talking about things on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mayor, council members, my name is Kim Johnson. I live at 3637 114th Lane Northwest in Coon Rapids. I'm gonna read from a script so I don't get waylaid. Coon Rapids is the place I have called home for the past 41 years. This is the city where we have chosen to live our lives. We have been involved in our children's activities, have taken advantage of the medical services, served the community by teaching in the elementary schools, been involved in the outreach through the Boy Scouts, belong to worship community, and shop locally whenever possible. We are law-abiding citizens and have taught our sons to do the same. This is the city where my grandchildren live. This is where I relocated my 90-year-old mother after my father passed. We take pride in our property, keeping it tidy and updated, and strive to be neighbors who support those around us. The recent Saturday night entertainment on Coon Rapids Boulevard has me more than upset. Winter in Minnesota is long, and we look forward to summer evenings spent sitting in the sanctuary of our backyard. Evenings enjoying windows left open with the fresh air passing through. This has been taken away from us and others who live around, along, and in proximity to Coon Rapids Boulevard. I acknowledge that the car rally, or whatever it is, is enjoyable for many. Totally get that. It is evident by the parade of folks lined up along the boulevard for blocks, but the fact is, they can come and go as they wish. The people who reside along this route are captive for five hours, 5:00 until dark, every Saturday evening. Even closed windows and television turned on are not enough to block the barrage of revving and squealing. We have friends who love to be a part of it for a couple of hours. Absolutely. We don't have that option. We're stuck. In the spirit of full transparency, we have neighbors who commented they enjoy walking up to look at the cars. We would too, if it were not every Saturday for five hours. If we had purchased a home near the freeway, I would expect to hear continuous traffic. If we had chosen to live near the railroad tracks or an airport, we would accept that we would have to endure the noise associated with that. As it is, I knew that we were choosing to live by the hospital. That meant the sirens of emergency vehicles at all times of the day or night. This past Saturday evening, we went golfing to get away from the noise on Coon Rapids Boulevard. We stayed away as long as we could considering the lack of venues open during pandemic restrictions. When we finally found our way back home at 9:00, the traffic on Coon Rapids Boulevard was at a standstill. No backyard bonfire for us. The roar and squeal of the muscle cars made it impossible to enjoy the crackle of a fire. Our calls and visits to the Coon Rapids police have been fruitless. We have been told that there is nothing they can do and that no laws are being broken. Seriously? If that is the case, then I would like to propose that the city of Coon Rapids takes a good look at the implementation of excessive noise and cruising ordinances, or at the very least, limit the cruising along the boulevard to maybe one night per month, or a limited amount of hours. In the past, we have bicycled to the Anoka car shows. We were asked to get off our bikes and walk them through the areas, and we politely complied. It doesn't appear to be the classic car enthusiasts that are causing the disruption. It is predominantly the muscle cars that are responsible for this aggressive racket. The city of Coon Rapids has canceled 4th of July events. The splash pad is off limits. Schooling had to be conducted remotely. Car windows have to be closed in the church parking lot for drive-in services. Children are not allowed to play in playgrounds in groups of 10 or more. Weddings that can't take place. Businesses are going under. Theaters are closed. Estate fair is canceled. No sporting events, either amateur or professional, are allowed. Hugs and handshakes highly discouraged. And ridiculously, the benches have been removed from the city-owned golf course. And yet, every Saturday night, Coon Rapids Boulevard is turned into a mile-long block party. We were told that the city is adding overtime officers to monitor the affair, so that sounds like that would be an additional financial burden out of our tax dollars. I haven't the heart to look at the mess left behind by spectators, a good number of which I speculate do not even reside in this community. So I don't know if the city is funding a cleanup of that as well. I imagine that ambulances are having to take alternative routes to the hospital. I'm wondering how that is working for critically ill patients. So just let me wrap up by reiterating. I am a resident. I'd wager a guess that most of the participants in this event are not. If anyone on this council is committed to representing the interests of the constituents, and what we are experiencing as residents in good standing, I would love to extend an invitation to spend an entire Saturday night in our backyard. Can't just drop in. Come spend five grueling hours. And I promise to be a gracious hostess. I'm pretty sure that numerous alcoholic beverages would not make it any more bearable. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Anybody else to address council this evening for open mic? I need to do timer. This one doesn't have a dinger on it.
Mayor, council, just making up that we are also allowing participation via Zoom, but tonight we don't have anybody that's attending on the public side of the meeting.
Okay, okay. All right. Nobody else for open mic this evening? And then what'll happen is they'll write a report up, and they'll send you out a report on it. And I, and I think we, I think we're probably gonna have to have a conversation about a noise ordinance one of these days, sooner than later, and
Mr. Mayor.
We need to enforce it. Councilmember Ja, uh, Geisler?
I'll just add something to what you were saying. I'm a nurse and I work.
Yeah.
I'm a nurse, and I work at Maple Grove Hospital, and I take Coon Rapids Boulevard to go work my night shift starting at 7:00. And at 6:00 on Saturday, sometimes I try to make my way there so I can be there early and be prepared. And that is sometimes delayed with all of the traffic that's going on, on that Saturday night due to this rally that's going on. Or I have to find like a very long, winding, different way to get to work. So just take that into consideration as well, that there's people who are trying to get to work.
Every Saturday night, I, I avoid the boulevard. I
Yeah.
I'm either sitting there, or I'm taking back roads.
Yeah, unfortunately, my house is like, I'm on Mississippi Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard, and that's like one of the major roads to jump onto to get to the highway and everything. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Geisler?
Since we're on this topic, I know we've got one more agenda thing before we have other business. I've been bringing this up on other business since this thing started. I get calls and emails every week. And I think Mr. Stemwaddle and Chief Wise can attest to them getting calls and emails from me multiple times a week, because, you know, and we have, we've done the enforcement, so they're writing citations, you know. Chief Wise is now sending me the lists of citations every week, you know, in the 15 to 60 per Saturday evening. I know that the Cruiser Club that put out the Facebook, I mean, they have cleanup crews, and they go out and clean that up, but they clean up the boulevard. And I get calls for the people in the side roads that are having beer bottles thrown on their lawns that are, you know, litter and noise in the later hours. And people trying to do burnouts and racing on streets other than Coon Rapids Boulevard. And Ward 4 gets hit hard, because this is where the boulevard is. And we have, we've gotta look at something, because we can't stop people from driving on a public road. Totally get that, you know. But we can stop for, you know, reckless driving, or if they find outdated tabs, or people talking on the phone. I've seen driving without do care. They've had people charged with, or citations for driving without a suspended, or with a suspended license. So we can, we can do as much as we can, and I know Chief Wise has done a good job, you know, calling some of those individuals that are doing the bad behaviors. But the problem is that there's so much. I live about a block and a half off of the boulevard, maybe two blocks. Doors and windows shut, air conditioner on, I still hear it. And it's more than five hours. They start at 3:00, and they go to 10:00 or 11:00. And it, and I know that I too, we've got some classic cars and we'll drive it, and it's nice to be out there for a little drive. And I love the people who are on the boulevard, and it's great for the businesses, but it can't affect the quality of life in our city, and it's, that's what it's starting to do. And so we can't arrest everybody who drives. We can't, you know, you know, I've asked for different solutions. Are there things that we can close down the median area so people can't do all the different U-turns? Can we, you know, put different things up? But that is another big cost to the city of taking the time to put up no parking signs, you know, putting up barriers, other kinds of things. So we've gotta look at how can we make this so it's maybe infrequent, it's short, that we've got something that's enforceable. Noise ordinances are notoriously hard to enforce because it's, it's, well, you may be stationary, and there's a lot of noise. The citation has to be to the one vehicle, and it's about sustained duration in a spot. And if they're moving, it's really hard, right? And so it's looking at how do we look at, you know, are there, you know, Anoka, for an example, because they had all the cruise issues, and they had cruise ordinances and things that they put forward. We just, I think, need to take a step back and look at, you know, doing the citations has helped somewhat, and we've done some things, but we've gotta look at how can we make this better for all of the residents?
Your Honor, just briefly.
Councilmember Johnson?
So I, I hear the complaints and, and understand them. I, I do wanna express a little bit of caution about the whole notion of cruise ordinances and things like that, especially since when Anoka tried it, it got held unconstitutional.
Oh, okay.
And so that, that issue has been up. And then, and then there was this little game that was played with, with Anoka and the cruisers. And we're talking back in 1988, '89 kind of time period, but where they would then make a tiny little amendment in the ordinance and repass it, so that then it would get challenged again. And, and so I, I do think there are things that we can do to talk about ways of deterring the bad behavior and encouraging the good. And I know we all look forward to a time when, when we can really encourage maybe the development of something like what Anoka had in, in the time when we weren't all social distancing, and that is kind of a car show where there's a place for people to be. And that tends to significantly tamp down kind of the, the driving issues and problems that are there. So this is a new thing
Yep.
for the city, and we're in a weird time with the pandemic and fewer options for people. But I do think it's worthwhile that we get it on a workshop so we can have a meaningful discussion about it.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, and I think it, it's fair to recognize that the way this started was because they couldn't have their car shows.
Right.
They couldn't go to these places and have their car shows, and which they charged money admission, and so that's how they raised money for their clubs. I'm hoping that now as things are opening up, that they go, hey, I wanna go make money for my club, and they go and have their car shows, which, you know, because I think a lot of people like to go see the old cars, and the people who wanna see them, they should be able to go see them. And, you know, we just need to step back and take a look at how can we work with those people in the community and really make it a positive, not 10-hour day noisy, not 10, but six, seven hours on a Saturday, every Saturday? You know, I, I've had people go, you know what? I now pray for rain on Saturdays. They literally, you know, that they want rain on Saturdays, because then they don't have the noise. So. And I was gonna ask if Chief Wise, if you have any updates or comments on the cruising and from your perspective?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, is that yes, the officers have been out there and have been aggressively enforcing the laws that are being violated. And I know you asked me for a copy of some of the citations that have been written on Saturdays. And the things that we can do is put extra staff out there. It just costs money. And it was a tough decision for me to make, to spend taxpayer dollars to do that in this coronavirus environment that we're living in. That said, is that we'll take a more aggressive approach this coming Saturday. We'll pay some overtime. We did ask the county to send help if they're able to. We did ask the State Patrol. I don't, I don't know what you're seeing, how much participation we're getting from them. But yes, people are violating state statute regarding speeding and other offenses. And we're citing them when we're able to catch up with them. It's just, there's a lot of cars out there, and that's very challenging.
Chief Wise, is there ever anything we can do with noise? Or is there anything we can do to affect an ordinance that would work? I seriously remember getting stopped in 1981 by Lonnie Hayes. He had a microphone out the side of the squad car, and he told me how loud my motorcycle should be. And I went, oh. I said, do you, would you like to see the receipt for my new exhaust that I literally just purchased that day? And he goes, just make sure you got it. So.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sure that was the case. Yeah, decibel, I think that was probably decibel meters back in, back in the day, as it were. And I don't know of a decibel standard. I'd researched it some. They're designated by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is what constitutes pollution, noise pollution. It's complicated by roadways having certain exemptions, like road noise just in general. You have sound barrier walls that go up on the basis of how it's, it's metered from the PCA, Pollution Control Agency. But, but roads make noise. Tires make noise. And, and it's a very tricky standard. And so, the regulations aren't, aren't very clear as it comes to road. How much noise is being made going down a road? It's easy to say things like semis can't use a jake brake, or that engine braking, and it makes noise. Those are easy to enforce, therefore, semis don't do it. It's easy to enforce cars that don't have working exhaust, because they can't conceal whether or not they have working exhaust. Those things are easy to, to deal with. The hard part is, and I've seen them myself, like a brand-new Dodge Challenger with factory exhaust, if you stomp on it, 700 horsepower, makes a lot of noise. And people are just able to do it. Meanwhile, their muffler system is perfect, complies with every statute ever written. And then noise just becomes subjective. It's too noisy to me and I don't like it. So like in the old days, car stereos, we used to say, in my squad car, my windows were rattling and I could hear the vibration, and you'd write a citation, and it's a car that's 30 feet away. And you used to be able to do that. It's just, engine noise is just a hard, it's a hard thing to describe. It's hard to walk into a courtroom and say, Your Honor, that was too noisy, and the driver should have known he is too noisy, and he violated the statute and should be punished accordingly. It's just a difficult thing to get that circumstance on the road into a courtroom to get a judge to agree that that person should be fined.
I was down putting new exhaust on my son's car, and the guy next to me was getting an estimate for cutouts, and I'm going, oh, I don't think that's a good idea. All right. Councilmember Wells?
Working back in the, when we had a decibel reader. And, you know, you'd think that that would, that would work, because you get an actual number, and the judges threw it out, and we ended up getting rid of it, because they wouldn't take the citations anymore. But just briefly, I look at this situation. It was a diversion during a very difficult time, but I think it's time for it to go away. Coon Rapids Boulevard should not be shut down anytime, you know, much less for several hours on a Saturday night. And it seems like Chief Wise has a really good relationship with the organizers and stuff. And I, I think we should strongly encourage them to pick a date, and this needs to go away. Like I said, it was a nice diversion, gave people something to do, but I think it's time for it to move on.
So one of the alternatives to that is, I keep hearing, if it was once a month, we could put up with it. If it was once a month, I mean.
I, I'm gonna tell you, I, as somebody who lived through it in Anoka back in the 80s, I just don't know how you're going, gonna get that to happen, as a practical matter. One thing that I, I think we really ought to consider, given that we have some space in the city, is whether or not we can encourage them to spend a little less time driving and a little more time parking, and maybe even bring a car show in to take stuff off of the street. And, and that actually, there was a, going back in the day, there was a cruising task force that was, started back in '88 in Anoka. And the recommendation there was to bleed the traffic off of Main Street by taking Old Rocket Park and the fairgrounds, and creating sites for people to park and pop their hoods and show their cars and things like that. And ultimately, ironically, years and years later, that's what happened after they tried the ordinances and they tried the barricades, and they tried other things. So I think there are options that we have. I think it's time that we get together and start talking about those options.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's have a workshop about it then.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will also give Commissioner Schulte a call. I know, you know, he's, has been generally supportive of it, because, you know, and people will be at his business, to, to get the county to participate. It is a county road. And I get that it's in our city and that we generally do the policing, but, you know, I would think the county sheriff could stop somebody on a county road if they chose to. So to see if we can get their participation on Saturday as well. Because I think having a little bit more visible people out there, and I do like, because there's at least one, if not two, unmarked cars that do stop a lot of folks, and that, I think surprises them a few times. And so, just to have that presence and make sure that people understand that it's, the behavior is just not acceptable. That is, the, the loud, the burnouts, the high acceleration, the littering, the public urination on the buildings, you name it. It's been bad. We need to make it a positive thing, or it goes away.
Interesting. All right. So we are on to item 14, open-mic response to Mr. John Holland. He appeared by Zoom webinar and asked council to look into the mowing and maintenance of weeds along Coon Rapids Boulevard?
And foley.
And, leading the witness. Noted that the city's parks looked amazing, but the Boulevard looks terrible. In the letter of the response he would have received, maintenance of high visibility roadway corridors seems to come up from time to time, especially along the higher-volume county roads throughout the city, Lake Foley. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, maintenance this year has been less than normal because of minimal seasonal staffing and availability of correctional worker crews. City staff continues to foster discussions with Anoka County Maintenance Staff on options for improved and/or shared maintenance responsibilities. Ideas are being exchanged, but limited personnel and budget at this time make it difficult to address all areas with a high level of maintenance. A meeting is planned with Anoka County staff on Tuesday morning, and additional information will be shared with the council on outcomes. So was that this Tuesday morning? And you have something to share with us, Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor Council, yeah. Well, I can at least share that engineering staff met with county highway staff, discussed that, kinda discussed what resources they could share, where they could split some of those duties, you know, if they spray weeds, we'll mow certain areas. And that focus was on Coon Rapids Boulevard, foley, Main Street, Hanson, some of those higher-level thoroughfare streets that the county has maintenance over, but certainly the city would be willing to participate in beautifying those areas. So that, Tim Hemmer and Joe McPherson met about that, and they're gonna get a plan together hopefully here in the next week, probably gonna attack that for the rest of the summer.
All right. Excellent, thank you. So that was provided for informational purposes, and we are on to other business, although I feel like we've beat other business to death already.
I've got one other one.
Councilmember Geisler?
First, if you have not read it, out on our city webpage, Chief Wise wrote a beautiful message to the community, and I think it's important for everybody to, to go take a look at that. And I would like to thank Chief Wise for taking the time and putting the energy in to do that, because it's really about transparency. And in the questions with everything that's been happening in our general community at large over the last two, probably the last month now, that knowing that our city takes a little different view of how we police, it's really more about that community servant and being a helper to the community, and making sure that our residents have that information versus questioning, well, what, what does our police force do? So thank you for taking the time and writing that. And if you haven't seen it, go check it out on the website.
It was very well done, and I think you've achieved viral status.
Yep. And it's on Facebook, and it's on Instagram, it's on Twitter, I think. It's all over there.
Yep.
We don't like talking about virals.
Give me a new word then. I don't know what the new word is for that. All right. Mr. Anderson, I would love to hear how things are going at the golf course and Kendall's and everything, everything else in your domain up there.
Mayor Council, it's been too long. It's good to have a little bit of normalcy and be back in front of you, talking about bunker hills and golf. And restaurant operations, it's certainly been a unique golf season. Not because the golf course is in great shape, which it is, that's not unique. We've been very busy. That's not necessarily unique either, but we've been busy with folks, a lot of them who we haven't seen in quite a while, that are coming back to golf, first because it was one of the only things they could do, and now because they realize that, you know, I miss this sport. So that's been really a fun part of this crazy experience. Certainly, we lost a, a large chunk of our spring, which hurt significantly, hurt GolfTech, hurt us, hurt the restaurant. But we're hoping to get on to more normalcy at the golf course, hosting our charity and corporate events. We'll see, most of those have been pushed off to August and September. They're hanging with us, and we're just waiting for more things to be allowed. And we're hopeful that we will be able to host all of those events. We're very happy to have curbside service and our patios open, and we are seeing a lot of activity, which is exciting, again, to have some more normalcy back at the golf course, back to the food and beverage operation. The next step will be opening dining room. A couple challenges in that space are getting back up to staffing levels and sourcing, as a scratch kitchen, I'm to understand, getting all of, sourcing all the food necessary for that, to get to a full menu. So those two things have to happen, and then we can reopen the dining room, then flow into the bar, and then fill out the building from there. So those things are ongoing, and we're hopeful that they occur sooner than later. So.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I know everybody was pretty excited to hear Kendall's was opening again. All right. Any questions for Mr. Anderson while we've got him at the mic? Drill him? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other business for council? Really? Wow. We did cover a lot of ground last time. Let's see, so this is the last meeting in June. So do we have any, our next, like, meetings in the park, if we have those, would be July, right? And those are still tentatively hanging in there to see what happens?
Mayor Council, yes, we, they're still on the schedule. You know, it's, it'll be a challenge depending on what guidance is at that time, whether or not those events get hosted. But we do have two Summer in the City meetings scheduled for July 14th and the 28th, I believe, is the second one. Kind of the second, last three concerts at the dam are still effectively on the dock yet. Again, kinda waiting for future state guidance on large group gatherings of that sort. We're expecting some more of that guidance soon, and so we didn't wanna be premature in canceling any of those events. But we'll have to stay a little bit dynamic in terms of when and if those things can happen.
Okay, fair enough.
Your Honor, if I might just.
Councilmember Johnson?
So as the temperature has kicked up, I've actually started to get a ton of calls from young parents about the splash pad. And I, I was wondering if you could just address that briefly for the community as to what the city's current thinking is on that.
Sure. The splash pad is a challenge primarily because we can't control the number of people who visit the site.
Right.
And so, as we look at guidance related to groups that can gather and the ability to sanitize the equipment, it's a pretty big challenge right now. And so, we would, we would need that number to be probably much more than 25, which is sort of the current guidance for that. And even then, under that, they're still encouraging at least social distancing, being able to sanitize equipment frequently. So it's a challenge there. There are a few cities who have been able to open those facilities, but they're gated, they're ticketed, they're managed in a different way, where you could probably time it out and say, okay, you get an hour, you know, you come in, you pay, or maybe you don't, you get an hour, you move on. You know, we don't have that ability there without doing some extraordinary things and staffing it, and then we're talking about, you know, sort of another expense that we didn't anticipate. So I think if they get to the point where those numbers are probably over 100 people that can gather in a spot, then we, there might be more of reality that we could do that. But right now, it's a, is a challenge. And the guidance from the League of Cities is that unless you're a facility that can meter out the number of people who are there, they would recommend not to open them until future guidance is available.
So right now, the, the best advice to the community for protecting the health, safety, and welfare, especially of young children, is we're not gonna reopen it at this point in time, but we're, we're anxious to find a time when we can.
Yep. It's, as soon as we feel the guidance is there that would allow for it, it wouldn't take very long to turn it on, and it would be available as soon as we get the go-ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Griscovia?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, we canceled some of our Summer in the City meetings. We may postpone the last ones, they may or may not occur. But something that happens a little bit later in the summer is the Night to Unite. Is, is that canceled as well? Is there guidance on that?
I know the answer, but.
Mayor Council, of course, you're gonna cold call me on the date. But yeah, we, we're postponing it to October. And that was the National Association of Town Watch, which is the larger organization, the national organization, pushed the date back, recommended a new date. And so, us, Night to Unite, are moving the date to match that. So it's in October.
First, first Tuesday.
October 6.
So that council meeting date in October is now October 7th. To accommodate that, we were planning on August 5th. As a Wednesday council meeting, that got moved back to Tuesday, August 4th, since that is now an open date. So we'll anticipate 19th night unless we hear otherwise in October.
Completely different weather in October than August.
Wear your Halloween costume. Different theme.
All right. Okay. Any other business to come before council this evening? Oh, I'm sorry, one more question. Have we been able to do anything with parking by Crooked Lake?
Have to check, and Mr. Hemmer's not here. It was to be posted, there were a couple of sections that were to be posted. I don't know, do we, do we know if that ever got posted?
There are certain sections, and I'm not sure whether it's been posted or not. The Fire Marshal indicated that there are certain areas that should be posted, but I'm not sure whether that's yet occurred.
I'll have to follow up on that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other business to come before council this evening? Motion by Wells, second by a kicker to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.